Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Thanks, sir.
We get to see sometimes pictures of, there's a very cute young lady over here. Melissa's daughter is her picture on the Zoom, so that's a nice treat. This evening, we'll be addressing our last budget presentation. As we experience this, this is also a time to remember we've been a year into this COVID. This budget is partially affected by COVID and our spending to address that. There will be opportunity for questions on the agenda and of course, the budget presentation following Mr. Broaddale's presentation and then at the conclusion, if you have questions, please indicate by your name. And in the chat feature of this Zoom, Steve assists me in calling through the questions, so and reading out the questions. If you want, you could also put a topic because then we can bring them together and answer them all at once. So let's get started with, I like to move the superintendent's report right to the forefront. So Gordon, if you could start, that would be great.
Yes, thank you, Bob. And you gave a great lead and it was a year ago, March 13th, when the governor did tell us to close in our March meeting. This meeting was our first Zoom meeting last year, Bob, if you recall. This is the third presentation. It is the largest part of the presentation mainly because it deals with salaries and benefits. And as Bob mentioned, COVID, as you'll see by the end of the presentation, the expenses of COVID cost us a great deal, particularly going forward into the future. I'd like to remind the community and the board that this is, I call these Linda's guestimates, her estimates in January, February, and March. But you'll see next month in April, when we get the final real numbers from the governor, our budget firms up, we have definite figures for everyone. But we find out historically that Linda's very accurate and almost dead on all seven years I've been doing this budget presentation. So I'd like to tell again, it's March, our third and final one. And we are planning on like last year, hopefully a normal opening in September. We did last year at these times, no one knew that COVID would last going through the summer into the fall. And here we are still dealing with COVID every day. I report to the board and the community every day on our COVID numbers. And here we are a year later. But now the theme is open up. We have vaccines. We have people following regulations more carefully and we're seeing better numbers. But hopefully the fall, because we are readjusting. If we are find out the summer, we're in another predicament going forward. If we have to refund all those things we put in place to operate and get open and stay open. Ken, if you do the next slide, please. Ken?
Okay.
Yep. One more, bud.
There we go.
Yeah, as you could see, we presented January, we did 12% of the budget. February was 10. Tonight is 78%, the last piece in the budget. And again, it's that big because salaries and benefits. Ken, the next slide, please. As we go through the presentation, before we do, it's very important to see how the board and we in district office look at our enrollment and our schools. We don't just dwell on one segment, one building. We look at all three together. And what we try to do is determine where are the needs this year with what we have in our budget? What are the needs in each level, K4, 5, 8, or 9 through 12? Now you'll see that in parentheses where we are actually able to get some money without spoiling the integrity of our program, cutting programs, cutting AP classes, low enrollment classes. They may, they are there. Nothing is cut. Five through eight, we just didn't add some programs we'd like to. But as you'll see, as we go through this budget, it's not the time to add new programs. So 100,000 that we were going to set aside, we find that we're going to have to put towards a need. Nine through 12, doing through creative scheduling of teachers. We cut out extra classes called six for teachers. We saved quite a bit of money, 160,000 there. And operational, I think it's the next page, due to contract, not renegotiation, but restructuring of contracts and operational, we saved another 160. So you'll see that those savings in five through eight, nine through 12 and operational can fund the needs that we might anticipate using in K through four. And let me explain that. K through four, we're seeing a larger enrollment early than we've ever seen before. And let me give you an example of that. We are seeing sixth grade, we are seeing fourth grade, third grade students added. But kindergarten is a good example. February 9th, we counted people enrolled in kindergarten were 58. As we speak today, there are 108 enrolled in kindergarten. And we didn't even experience the summer where we always have that last July, August rush before the school year begins. So that creates a need. We might need extra staffing. We don't know exactly where that's going to go at this point. But we feel with the enrollment way ahead of what it ever is, that we have a need there and we better get some money in order to pay for that. We don't want to pass this budget in May and then suddenly need staffing because of enrollment in July or August. We had that happen when we went to full decay. We need to hire a kindergarten teacher in August. We don't want to go through that again. So we look at it as a whole picture. Where can we save? Where is the need? And right now, the need is there. We have to maintain our reading and writing programs and as we've implemented a math program. But we're seeing the enrollment part. We want to be prepared if we need those extra staff members. Okay, Ken, thanks. Next page. Now here is the operations and maintenance and two areas where we decreased. If you look at contractual on the second line, you'll see that that went down. BOCs also decreased contractual. We reworked some of the contracts with our custodians, night custodians in particular, and we're restructuring there at a savings. I just mentioned that on the prior page. So we decreased that category. BOCs, we have no need for all of the services we've used in the past. For example, asbestos abatement. We don't see that coming up, no need for that. So there's a savings there too. So that whole category of operations and maintenance. And of course, you've got the usual equipment. If it wears out, we have to replace it. Oil electric, that's typical. But the two areas contractual and BOCs, we made a savings, a total savings in that area of $178,000. Ken, next slide, please. Grounds and security, we're able to maintain it, no increase. Again, equipment, if it wears out, we have to replace it for our grounds people. There are other service contracts used for irrigation, electricians, et cetera. No, no increase in security guards. It's still five armed guards, the one unarmed roaming guard on the weekends. And material supplies, the same thing, but this is zero increase in that category. Ken, next, please. Athletics, again, we thank Scott. Slight is remaining exactly the same in athletics. Equipment, if that's been replaced, we replace it. Typical contractual with trainers, official fees, et cetera. Materials and supplies, but no, no increase there either. Ken? Same for health services. No increase in health services. Contractual, I'd like to point out, we, that funds our doc, school doctor as well as our contribution to those schools and the health offices where our non-attending students who attend to schools outside of the district, we have to contribute to the costs there for the health there, doctor and supplies. But again, still keeping everything in the budget, no increase. Now here is, here is the largest piece. And on the bottom, you can see this is the increase. Now what we, how we refer to employee benefits, these are the items we can't control. ERS, Employee Retirement System, the state tells us what that will be each year. So if you look what we budgeted this year, what we're proposing next year, that's to cover the costs proposed by the state. The same with the teacher's retirement system, TRS. You can see last year is 9.5%. The state raised it to 9.8, but it's nowhere near what it used to be. It was extremely high and expensive for us. But still, even at that 0.3%, there's an increase from 2754 to 2832. Social Security, the third thing we have no control over. You see an increase there of almost $150,000 annually, every year, because we all know our insurance goes up every year. Health, dental, life and disability, Linda plans a 5% increase. So you'll see an increase there. Workman's comp, we slightly decreased. Now unemployment insurance, you'll see a jump of 40,000. Now, please stay with me. I have said, mentioned earlier in the presentation, the COVID expenses of 2 million, which I addressed in February, that 2 million included COVID teachers, as we call them. We're not rehiring those people and they will be unemployed. We're planning on opening regular, we're going back to pre-COVID days. And that we anticipate, that's why the rise in unemployment insurance. So we'll be people unemployed with this budget. Then we have TSA, the teacher's shelter. Someone runs and takes care of that for us as they do Affordable Care Act. So it's two people who take care of those things and that stayed the same. But the big picture, this is a heavy cost. It's the increase of $586,332 in that category. That's the big target this month, the big ticket item. Ken? So this is the review. This is the review. A quick one, January, 1% and 12% of the budget. There's an increase in the TANS. We saw some increase in technology for software for computers one-to-one initiative. As we build upon that, software for remote learning. That was resulted in a small raise in January. February, we saw a bigger raise because of a factor of BOCs, how they work, and I explained this before in a three-year average. How many of our students, which are special needs and general gen ed and BOCs, how many we have enrolled? We have increased our average increases. We're done with the old three-year average. It's a brand new one. So it's a higher average, higher cost. And then of course, anything in IEP, in PPS, there was the increase because whatever the student needs on their IEP, we provide that. So between those two things in February, that accounts for the rates. And then of course, now the big item here, salaries and benefits in this month of March is the other major increase. So when you look at the whole picture, actually with all of that, our budget is only going up less than 1%, 0.83 at this point over last year. Increase of less than 1%. Okay, Ken, next slide, please. What we anticipate in the tax levy to bring in, in revenue to the district, you'll see the difference between this year and last year. Our tax cap allowed by the state is 1.94. Again, we're still under the 2% governance tax cap. You'll see the appropriated fund balance. Here we put in 2 million. This year, we're appropriating from fund balance, 1,883. And then the revenue that we anticipate based on Governor Cuomo's budget in January. Now again, we all know that in April, we get the real numbers. So again, next month is key, critical to find out exactly where we are. But all these estimates, you'll see what our proposed budget is, 62,281,000. That's an increase of 511,000. And the budget is increased by 0.83%, less than 1%. Now the next slides, Ken, if you would please, these are critical. Some of you out there are probably our friends who've been attended these meetings over the last seven years and you know what this has looked like in the past. And to do excellent fiscal planning, Linda usually at the request of the board plans out four or five years. If you notice, we're not going out four or five years because things have changed. Now what really affected our fund balance and going out into the future is if you look on the bottom in the purple, the appropriated fund balance for COVID was $2 million. We didn't plan on that expense. That was in fund balance. And we had to use it to get open, stay open, hire people, recreate structures, main offices, buy shields for desks, masks, you name it. And we're well into that $2 million at this point. Okay, just so you're aware of that. So what is, what does it look like? Looks like we'll get through next year okay. But again, those of you, those folks out there in the community have been attending these meetings. Remember when we talked about 4%? And we're usually above that, the fund balance, and that's allowable by state to maintain four. And we were thinking four was enough. And the state was thinking of raising that to six. Well, four is the good old days, kind of. If you look at the 4%, 2021, this year, we are at 4%. Next year, we go down to 2.72 after we commit money from the fund balance to the budget. And the real year of concern is only two years away. And that's 2022, 23, because look at on the bottom. On, we've never, I don't think I've ever shown the community and the board 1.14 before. Or if I've ever shown the board and community, a fund balance is 720,000 ever. Now, the next slide will show you the difference. The top stays the same. But this is a world of imagination if we did not have to spend that 2 million on COVID this year. Ken, next slide, please, bud.
I believe that is it.
Yep, that's it. Thank you, Ken. Now look at the bottom numbers. If we did not have to spend the 2 million on COVID. Now we felt for a while that perhaps the state, the governor would reimburse us for that. But I'm not getting a warm fuzzy feeling that that reimbursement is coming. So at this point, we're thinking we're not getting any of that back. But you can see much healthier we are in the 22, 23 school year, two years away, should, if we had that 2 million. Our fund balance is back up to a little above 4%. This year, we would have been at six, more familiar numbers that we've seen in the last few years. But it's not that story anymore. But again, next month, we'll get the solid numbers and we'll see. Ken, the next slide, please. Next month, when Linda and I have all the numbers solid from the governor, we know what our state aid figures really are. We'll have to face that when we see it next month. So the board will adopt the budget next April at the next April's meeting. And that's the presentation. Thank you, Ken.
Hey, thank you, Ken. Thank you, Gordon. Steve, do we have questions related to the agenda or the budget presentation?
We actually do have some related to the budget presentation. The first one, Gordon, is from Lori Schneider. You may want to bring the slide back up. With regard to spending and projections for athletics, can you please review the slide again? And explain how those numbers were impacted by the athletic schedule this year? And how that would change if we have a regular athletic schedule next year?
Now I will let Linda join in here, but I believe it's way back, Ken. I believe we're planning to have a normal season next year. And these costs will cover that, all of those sports and being open as normal. Linda, am I correct?
Linda gets sent me a text, Gordon, that she's having trouble with her computer.
Oh, okay. So Lori, if that's from you, I have your email. We've been communicating. I believe it's opening as normal, anticipating normal seasons as we're anticipating a normal school year. But I will get that question answered for you tomorrow, if that's okay. But that's what I believe.
Your next one related to the agenda and budget from Monica Stone. Will federal monies from the American Recovery Plan cover any of the 2 million in COVID-related expenses? And do we anticipate receiving any money from the ARP for next year?
That's a good question, Monica. It's not a budget season without you being there, Monica. But anyway, I, again, I hate to answer for Linda, but we're not counting on that. We will find out in April exactly what we're getting. No one has indicated how much or what we're getting. So I will check again with Linda, but at this point, yes.
I'm muted. I can talk, sorry.
Good. Now the first question, did you get the first one from Lori?
Yes, yes, yes. Next, we're planning on the regular season and that's how we budgeted. So for next year, that's, we have the same money that we had the year before, so we should be fine.
And then Monica?
Monica's question about the amount of aid that we would get. We still are waiting until April 1st to find out exactly what we're getting because they indicate that we're going to be getting 2 million more, but that's because they had taken away 2 million from us. So I don't know if they're giving us any additional.
Okay, Steve, more questions?
I think Linda, before we go on to that, just to make it clear, because it, as we understand it, and you and I have spoken, it's more of a zero sum. If we receive monies, we've spent 2 million, but we've also lost revenue in aid. And as I understand it, we're hoping to get back to a position where it's just the COVID money we've spent, not a loss. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Also, keep in mind, and we often deal with this when we're looking across other districts. When we're looking at aid, remember we took the money from fund balance and a fund balance that was greater than 4%. Whether you agree or disagree with that cap of 4% is neither here nor there. Our concern coming into this is that as you look at what's on the screen currently, this is where we would have been. Or the next screen, please. This is where we would have been. And even next year, we would have still been 2% above the fund balance cap. We don't have a high confidence that we're getting any significant monies. We're of the opinion, we're not getting reimbursement. Maybe safety equipment, maybe any type of work we did to ventilation. But it is not going to be $2 million. Certainly it would be great. I don't want to, if they want to send it to us, that's fine. But it doesn't come to us directly. It goes to the state first and then they dole it out to us. So I saw something, someone had a follow-up question. Steve, did you want to continue?
So that's a follow-up from Lori. I think she's just clarifying on the athletics budget. If there was a savings for this year, how would they apply or were they applied?
Well, if we have a savings, that'll go towards fund balance. But I think that any equipment that was needed, we, we did buy. And any contractual, we still have to recondition all the, I guess, all the uniforms. And then we also have to pay the official fees. So we still haven't had that much of a savings. But if we do, it goes towards fund balance.
It's also a good example of the savings that we may have realized in terms of stipends. Are, it's not a huge amount because there were portions of the seasons that were not played. As you may have seen from last month's agenda, there were appointments of coaches. They were all done on a pro-rata scale. So that was, they're just getting a portion of the stipend that they're actually working. But this is a good example of the athletics is not a huge portion of the budget. Equipment may be, our contractual obligations may be, that's different than the actual coaches and sports and things like that.
Yeah, if I may, Bob, what's always, I don't know, people don't understand, you know, when budgets crisis arrive in districts, they say, we're going to cut sports. I think people imagine that cost to be much greater than it really is. It doesn't, where the money is in savings, when you have to cut is in positions and staff. That's where you really save. These other things, not so much. Not so much in music, not so much in athletics.
Do we have Kathy and Wally asked a similar question about the ARP? What is expected benefit, if any, from recent stimulus bill from the federal government? I don't believe we'll know that yet, right, Linda?
No, we won't.
And Monica had a question about enrollment. Enrollment decreased approximately 4% this year compared to last year. Do we expect a similar decrease for next year?
I, I should have addressed that more fully. Monica, the, if you hearken back to what I said earlier tonight about the enrollment, we've never had the enrollment so fast. And I am surprised like you, last year, we had 109 kindergartners. It went down from the year before. And I expected maybe to get 100, a little less than 100 for the first time in my time there. However, we're already at 106 and it's still growing every day. We have the secretary from the elementary school coming through our door, giving us a daily report. To think that we went from 56 or so to 108 from February 9th is amazing. And then Mr. Kaplan calls, he goes, Gordon got another two third graders today, fourth graders today. Ms. Heine calls, we've got sixth graders today. I just don't know where they're all coming from or where they're buying homes, but they're coming somehow. So I don't know. I think Monica may be able to know more, but final enrollment will probably be in the summer.
The, the interesting thing in our enrollment and where we have been in predicting is that other than a some increase, and if you see, even with the increase in the students in the K through four, our overall student population is down in that K through four grades. Our overall prediction is relatively close. Nine through 12 is saw some decrease in the past. It's presently stable. So we've seen some fluctuation and over the years, this is what is expected. We're not going to see the huge increases in overall district population because we just don't have, you know, whole sections being neighborhoods being built. Remember, you know, island estates being built and different sections being built. But there is homes being sold. There is a concern coming in that there might be a lot more homes coming on the market. But this is about where we expected as a district. But what's happened is the population has shifted a little bit back down to the elementary grades. But if you were to look at it individually, gone are the days of the 200 plus, 225, 235 class sizes, those are long gone.
That's correct, Bob. The last large class is going in the sixth grade next year, and that's 192 students. That's the last big one.
Rest of the questions, we can hold for the end, they're not part of the agenda.
Good. All right, thank you very much, Ken. You can take that down. Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Pete, would you please take that?
Yes, approval of minutes resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education.
Yes, approval of minutes resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the minutes of the February tenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting as submitted.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Well, any comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel, A and B, Steve, would you please address those?
Sure. A resignation, art teacher Christina Romeo. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Christina Romeo. Art teacher effective March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
May I have a second?
My second.
Second.
Thank you. Just a comment. Not really a loss. If you read on to the next portion, it's based on her promotion, but I will comment. Certainly a loss for the department, though she does keep her hands in the arts side. But a great opportunity for us and for the district. All in favor indicate aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Steve, B, please?
The appointments administrative, assistant principal, director of music and applied arts. Resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointment. Christina Romeo, appointment for date March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, interim appointment July first, twenty. Expiration date June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Tenure area assistant principal, director of music and applied arts, the compensation of twenty twenty-one salary.
Thank you Steve, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor indicate aye?
Aye.
Congratulations. Ms. Romeo and doing a great job. And C, Lisa, please?
Sure. C, appointments instructional. Substitute teachers resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education hereby approves the following appointments. Anita Russia, employment date of three eighteen twenty-one, for substitute teacher at one hundred and seventy-five dollars per day. Kristen Roberto, employment date of February second, twenty twenty-one, as a substitute teacher at a hundred and seventy-five per day.
Thank you Lisa. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you Steve. Any comments? All in favor indicate aye?
Aye.
Ed, D for appointments, non-instructional, please?
Appointments, non-instructional, network and systems coordinator, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education hereby approves the following appointment of Mark Kennett. Effective March eighth, twenty twenty-one, as a network and systems coordinator for a compensation of a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you Ed, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? I see.
One comment, Ken Jockers will be sorely missed. He's done a wonderful job with our systems throughout his tenure here.
Thank you.
I would join in that. I think it's time for him to get more time in his kayak than he's been getting. So we appreciate all that you've done, all the hours you've put in. We've had the pleasure of meeting Mark. I think he's up to the challenge, though they are big shoes to fill. We look forward to this transition and congratulations. Ken will be with us for a little while longer, working together as a team. But he's moving on to a much deserved retirement, so. All those in favor of Mr. Kennett's appointment, please indicate by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pete, substitute custodians, number two?
Number two, substitute custodians, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education hereby approves the following appointments. Andrew Glass, March first, two thousand twenty-one, substitute aide, fourteen dollars. Charles Conley, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, substitute custodian, fifteen fifty an hour. John Kooch, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, substitute custodian, fifteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Anthony Tarzia, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, substitute custodian, fifteen fifty an hour.
Thank you Pete. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor indicate aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anne Marie E, appointments, other?
One, coaches, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the appointment of the following coaches. The twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Samuel Kaplan, seven, eight boys soccer, step one. Courtney Leonard, varsity girls soccer volunteer. Amy Lennon, seven, eight cross country, step one. Megan Mazelowski and Matt Schneier, seven, eight cheerleading, step four. It's a split stipend. And Mary Ellen Karen, varsity girls lacrosse volunteer.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor indicate aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ed, number two, clubs and advisors?
Clubs advisors, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the following co-curricular clubs. And appoints the persons listed below as advisors for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Athletes helping athletes with Matt Armstrong and jazz choir with Eric Black.
Thank you Ed, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you Steve. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate by aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Lisa, action items committee on special education, please?
Sure, action items educational, many on special education, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education has no objections to the following special education recommendations. And approves the authorization for the funds to implement special education programs and services consistent with such as listed below.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate aye, aye?
Aye.
Steve, action items, A.
Nomination for Eastern Suffolk Bosse's board. Resolved, Mount Sonnet Board of Education hereby nominates Robert P. Sweeney as a candidate for a position on the Eastern Suffolk Board of Cooperative Educational Services, first supervisory district of Suffolk County.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Just a short comment. We're part of the Eastern Suffolk Bosse's, I've served there on various committees and I'm looking forward to an opportunity to join their board as well as this. They've done some great work and I have found their vision, something I'd like to be involved with. I may have lots of extra free time. I think there's seven minutes left in my schedule. So I look forward to it and I appreciate my colleagues' nomination. All in favor indicate aye, and I'm going to vote for myself, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And B, Anne Marie, gender neutral bathroom facilities policy?
Gender neutral bathroom facilities policy, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the gender neutral bathroom facilities policy that as proposed at the February tenth, twenty twenty-one board meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Steve. Any comments? All in favor indicate aye, aye?
Aye.
Tonight, Ed gets the resolution that everyone's been looking at ahead of time. See the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar, Ed?
Two thousand twenty-two school calendar, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education hereby adopts the attached two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school calendar as attached.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you Lisa.
May I add something to that, please? Just so that you doesn't misunderstand, on the district school calendar. That's not all of the events that happen during the year, sporting events, musical things, those are added through up to June. And the actual calendar with events is created this summer, the twelve page calendar. So all the events are not in stone yet on that thing. Days off.
Thank you. This is just our schedule. This is the schedule based on, it's actually done from June backwards to accommodate the region's schedule and date for graduation and it goes backwards to fill in the number of days, which actually the state counts by minutes nowadays. So any other comments? All in favor indicate aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pete, budget transfer, D?
D, budget transfer, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the following budget transfer. From budget code A, twenty-two fifty point one five oh four to budget code A, twenty-one ten point four five dash oh four, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor indicate aye, aye?
Aye.
Anne Marie, E obsolete equipment?
Obsolete equipment, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby declares the following items as obsolete and authorizes disposal as listed.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Nothing particularly interesting on this group, other than we're getting rid of a chair.
Chair.
All in favor indicate aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. F, Lisa, notice of budget hearing, budget vote and board election.
Sure. Note of budget hearing, budget vote and board of board election. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the publication of the notice of budget hearing, budget vote and election for the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one annual meeting as attached.
Thank you Lisa, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Ed. Any comments? All in favor indicate by aye, aye? And finally, G, Ed?
Memorandum.
Memorandum of agreement.
Agreement, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The Board of Education hereby approves the memorandum of agreement with the teachers association dated March fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you Anne Marie. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate aye, aye?
Aye.
That brings the conclusion of our agenda. Steve, if there are some questions, if you could start going through them, please?
Yes, the first one actually is from Jennifer Salmon, it actually is on the Facebook page, I'm honored, we're both after seeing some questions last month. When a student tests positive in the high school who's been attending in-person school, please explain why only one student in the class should be quarantined for close contact? This includes the teacher not being quarantined in a class when the teacher interacts directly closely with students.
Well, for more specific information, I would ask the principal and nurse who conduct the contact tracing, but basically every classroom has a seating chart. They ask, they interview the teachers and they see exactly where the student was sitting, what they were doing, who they were near. And for how long, and that's how they determine who is contact tracing at contact, close contact and it's quarantine. But again, in a particular case, they may free to call the school nurse or Mr. Pramit Harris to find out what the particulars were in that one. But I know they interview the teachers immediately when they find out and say, where was this student? Who was sitting near them and then were you near that student? And then the quarantining takes place.
Okay, our next one is from Rebecca, I don't have a last name, asking what is the plan for SEL implementation? I think social emotional needs should be a top priority.
I agree. And as I've sent material to the board, I believe Anne Marie requested that. You saw a great detail on how much extra are social workers, guidance counselors, psychologists are doing? They've never been busier and that is in the, and our teachers are also told to look at how our students are, how they're acting, what they're writing about, all of that. But they are on the money with it. If a parent has a concern with mental health need, they should contact an administrator so we can help them with counseling and services.
Okay, we have a question from Jacqueline Duddleston regarding testing. Do grades three through eight take NWEA, a MAP growth test? And are they taking the state ELA and MATH tests?
So far, all week, we've been getting memos on regions exams and the grade three through eight assessments. As recently as, I believe, two days ago, what is the young lady's first name was writing?
Jacqueline, Jacqueline Duddleston.
Okay, Jackie, the, it looks like instead of two days or two parts at the point where we're speaking now, but a waiver may happen by then, where there's no exam, but right now they take one part, the first part on one day for the grade three through eight assessment, not like the two days, which it were four days at one time. So it's one part if they happen. Now, right now, there are only four regions exams too. ELA, algebra, earth science and living environment. And we think that those might be waived. Initially, the Biden presidency, the new Department of Education said they want that to happen. Because in the ESA Act, however, they're having second thoughts, New York State. So we'll see how it's going to happen, but right now, they're much reduced than they used to be, Jacqueline.
Okay, from Karen Pitka, is the district looking to put a policy or plan in place when teachers slash staff are quote healthy quarantined? Such as having the teacher or staff livestream from home? Many districts give, many districts give teachers this option rather than having to use their personal days or time when quarantined due to being exposed to school.
We have been doing that, as far as I know, especially in the high school recently. The elementary school teachers, I believe, were teaching if they're healthy and they can from home. Of course, you know, you can, Karen, I don't know which grade level you're looking at, but I believe we've been doing that. Teachers have the opportunity, I'd rather have the real teacher teach than not the real teacher teaching, some lesson being posted or sub trying to do it. So as far as I know, a lot of teachers have been healthy, if they are healthy, they'll teach live from home.
And Monica Stone has a COVID question, COVID vaccination question. Do we have, do you have data on the percentage of staff and teachers who are vaccinated at this point?
The last the last poll that the teachers organization took was, I believe, sixty percent. Now, I haven't updated that with them, but I thought that was pretty impressive at that point, considering Eastport South Manor had a health facility catered to their entire, all of their faculty and all their buildings. And less than sixty percent volunteered for the test. Not everybody, some people have concerns about the vaccine. But Ed, I'll, I'll see if we have an update, but sixty percent about Lisa.
And then Gordon, just to add, that was before the availability at the pharmacies, that number.
That's right.
I know of personally certain teachers who were having some difficulty getting appointments. And when they were able to get to the pharmacy and have their vaccine, they had a lot of open appointments, so that number may have improved further.
I went to the QV, the CV, CVS in Smithtown and I got it within a week, the Johnson Johnson. So they did have, yeah, for almost a drop of vaccines in an area and then quick get on the phone.
From Kathy and Wally, is there an update on the instructional hours waiver from the state?
Right now, hours, yes, we got it yesterday. On, but you still have a hundred and eighty days. The hours were waived for our district. I just got that yesterday afternoon.
Okay, from Karen Pitka, with students returning full time, will you be considering having board meetings in person with limited capacity at some point in the fall?
I don't know if Bob wants to answer, I think we are talking about right now, having in-person board meetings in the future, Bob.
Yes, I think we're going to be returning. Yes, I think we're going to be returning to that. Frankly, I would like to see a mixture where we keep some of this chat room open because not everyone can come to the meeting. There's a lot of reasons you can't. We found that the question process is pretty smooth. So we're going to look at how we can take what's been positive and bring it with us into the regular meetings.
We definitely see more participation in this realm.
Yeah.
There is more.
Tonight, good example, the question that was asked, you know, did we get our waiver? People would like to hear that. So it's a good question. Thank you.
From Brad Arrington, what is being done to increase capacity throughout for students in the middle school? Students are having to wait excessively long times due to current policies. These wait times can be 20 minutes or more.
Again, that's a question for the principal. I know they do, but I know Ms. Heine is extremely conscientious about distancing the kids. And there have been 20 minutes shifts. I've been aware of that. They go to different locations in the building like they do in the high school. We try to accommodate the lunch period, but right now, you can't, you can't have too many kids for 40 minutes in the same spot. I think things will be better as we get into warmer weather and kids want to be outside at recess and you'll have kids eat in 20 minutes and then go outside for 20 minutes. But for specifics, I would, I suggest talking to Ms. Heine about it, but I know her policy and it's very conscious about distancing the kids. And Brad, you're right, so often 2020 for that right now.
Let's see, our next one is from Tara Siglio, Siglio. I apologize, I think I'm butchering that one. My son is in eighth grade and his Spanish teacher currently has 42 kids in one class. What is the reason for not continuing to look for a replacement for a Spanish teacher who left?
There's no, there's, we never let up looking for a Spanish teacher. We continue to do it. We've asking the state for waivers for student teachers to get them in there. We know they're in the auditorium. We know it's not ideal, but I didn't plan on this teacher taking a leave, nor did Ms. Heine middle of the year. And I know it's an inconvenience, but we continue to look. They're not out there. I even polled my 15 superintendent colleagues to see if they have any Spanish teachers, but they're at a premium right now, but we do continue to look. We understand that need.
Follow up to that is the position for Spanish on OLS?
Yeah, we've, Maureen, you can answer that too. We've been going everywhere for that.
Yes, it was placed on OLS. It's been on several times and we haven't had really a response.
Okay, there was a little follow up to the question about the testing, the NWEA. I don't know if that was addressed. She's asking about that again.
You might ask the middle school about that, how that might happen. I'm not familiar with that, just the assessments in the regions right now. The details, the NWEA, I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't want to give the wrong information.
There's a comment about board meetings being live streamed and a chat from home. We're going to be looking into that as well. I do have a question of sorts from Kristen Tadio, asking if all children will be issued laptops? Are we looking to do a one-to-one, I believe is what she's asking.
And you want to answer that?
Yep, we're starting on one-to-one in nine through 12 next September. We are also doing a six through eight with the help of some federal funding.
Then, of course, we're going to expand it down, correct? That's our plan.
Yep.
Okay, that looks like it covers everything from chat. It looks like we got everything from the Facebook Live as well. I don't see anything else popping up. Up, there's one more. What devices will be issued, Chromebooks or laptops? And then that'll be our last question.
Laptops, Windows laptops.
Ken.
All right, thank you so much.
Question myself, actually. You mentioned the region.
You can answer a question.
The junior, junior year regions canceled this year?
Yeah, the only regions that exist as we speak, because of the Every Student Succeeds Act from the Obama era, that, that requires a math, which is algebra, ELA. But that's a junior exam. And then you have living environment and earth science. That's often eighth and ninth.
So no geometry, no, no algebra three.
Geometry, no global, no American, no physics, no chemistry.
This is usually the heavy year. Okay, thank you. I just, I wanted to just.
Thank you, Steve. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Any comments? All in favor indicate aye, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all for your participation. Excellent questions. Have a good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.